Yeah.
Good evening, open night school, it is Monday, June 2nd, 2020, 6 o'clock, we're in the city probably largely ordering 327 building. Call me to order and ask Mr. How about you call one?
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Gayheart?
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Here.
Mr. Martel?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mrs. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Scarrow?
Here.
Do you have a quorum and we'll continue, I will note that this meeting has been noticed per state statutes, is there any community participation? Seen any, we'll just pass through reading that and move on to approval of our meeting minutes from June 8th. Should be attached to your agenda, any questions on those?
I move to approve that's between the 20 regular school board meeting is presented.
Is there a second?
Some.
To move in second and to approve the regular session school board meeting minutes of June 8th, 2020. Uh, Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yeah.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Motion carried, general other fund bills, Mr. Tron.
The general other fund bills this evening, coverage checks number 140114 through 140233, wire fund checks number three or 937 through 939, ACH check number 327 through 334, and voided checks, two of those, 139590 and 140034, in a combined amount of $324,665.98. There's a memo with some additional information on several of the bills in your packet and then that is followed by the treasures report.
I just had one question. So the payments to Gateway for AHS and youth options, is that just for coursework that that our students took through Gateway?
Correct.
Okay.
So that would be like the spring semester?
Got it.
Kind of work.
Okay.
Other questions, Mr. Tron?
I was looking at the the treasure report and like the medicated claim reimbursement, is that where they spread it out over, like we might get two years in a row because?
You might get three years.
Three years, okay, so that that's could be what that budget differences.
Yeah. Plus, we're working with a different administrator that helps us with that process and they're seem to be able to capture a little more.
I move to approve the general other fund bills of June 22nd, 2020, check numbers 140114 to 140233, wire numbers 937 to 939, HCH check numbers 327 to 334, and voided check numbers 139590 to 140034, in the combined amount of $324,665.98 as presented.
I'll second it.
So move in second and to approve the general other fund bills of June 22nd, 2020, checks number 140114 to 140233, wire numbers 937939, ACH check numbers 327 to 334, voided check numbers 139590140034, combined amount of $324,665.98 as presented. Roll call, please. Mrs. Fisher?
Yeah.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yeah.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
One second, I have, I got a text message that someone's trying to join the meeting. I don't see any message saying they're trying to join the meeting. Yeah, sorry, Sarah, let her, no, I don't, I don't, I haven't seen her pop up or anything to admit her.
I'll let her know, thanks.
Yes, uh, the resolution for the short-term borrowing, before we get to the resolution, Robert W. Baird wants to go over the bid results, which was this morning, they were due at 9:30, and Mike Clark from Baird was going to Google in, but he's having trouble, so I'm gonna call him on the telephone, so. Go through the. Bit results.
Hello, it's Mike.
Mike, Bill Tron, Elkhorn School. You are, yep, you are live here with Elkhorn School Board and we have, I think our superintendent's gonna pull up the pricing document here and then if you want to review that or have any other information, that'd be great.
All right, very good. They're kind of making a folder while I'm not sure what's going on with their technology, but they did a security update on the weekend, and I guess it is something like you said it, so. We don't have enough time, but I figured we could link to the successful one that happened. And we took bids today, I would have related to that referendum, but if you go to page two, since results of competitive bids. See that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, we received four bids, which, the four bids, I guess, is a little disappointing, although, uh, the, this is a smaller issue in the marketplace, and actually, the shorter end of the maturity curve, so bonds that mature probably in the first 10, in 10 years versus bonds above the 20, that part of the market has been a little bit swerved because rates are so low, but we're very happy with the results we did get. Bank of Oklahoma Finance Securities, Financial Securities was like better at 1.2733%. He bank, Piper and North End closely followed, so we're very happy with the results. I cannot recall a 10-year borrowing at this level, and I can't say for sure, but we're very pleased with the results. Interest rate was a little bit used to the referendum process. Going to page three, just describes the issue, these are general obligation promissory notes, and since they're going 10 years, they're notes as opposed to bonds, essentially same type of instrument, for the amount of $6,920,000, which is the full grant amount, and that's the full amount that the district will receive from projects. On the settlement date, the district will receive funds will be on July 13th, and then the maturities, you could pay interest before April 1, 23, but the maturities are just the actual principal payments, and principal payments will start in 2023 and then be finished in 2030. We're gonna get principal in the first couple of years just because we're wrapping around districts existing debts to kind of minimize the impact, and we'll see that a little more detailed in just a second. Call date on this will be April 1, 2028, however, given the rates that did receive, I'm not saying it's impossible, but likelihood of refinancing these for savings is not great. However, you might have the ability to prepay, and we didn't try to be too aggressive with the call date on this just because the district has substantial amount of debt coming call work, I think it's 24, 26 still coming up, so we didn't try to get too aggressive on the, excuse me, the call date on this. Moody's just did a firm for AA2 rating for the district, which is great, had very positive things to say about the district, the district is doing on things well, and the rating report is attached to the book, and I don't go through the report in detail, but the district continues to manage itself very well. The stability of the district in terms of the leadership is definitely a positive, you know, having continued good financial results year after year, some growth helps. I think there's, you know, possible moving up from the AA2 to AA1, it gets harder, the higher scale to move up, they did have some positive things to say, I think the two things that probably, probably kept those conversations from going very far were, the district's fund balance could be just a little bit higher, possibly. Even though the district utilized a lot of credit for a very short period of time, eliminate that would be a positive, the big, I think the bigger issue is just the whole uncertainty around the COVID-19 situation we're in, and the uncertainty on school funding and revenues and things, so, but the district continues to do phenomenal job in handling the things they can control. Again, the interest rate 1.2, excuse me, 1.2733%, and then through to the next page is the actual financing plan with all the numbers, small numbers, you can see that over on the left-hand side is the existing fund 39 debt service, and it's just around, that's just over $4 million, just over $4.1 million worth of debt, and if you, if you go to, go to the, to the right, you'll see that we stay at that level in terms of bill rates, we're $1.89 for your debt service, and actually, because we received so much premium, and I'll touch on the premium in a second, the rate actually is gonna be a little bit lower than that the next few years, and then we'll just wait back up to $1.87 and then you have a drop, a bigger drop off in the future. Those drops are something we've, over the years, have always tried to build in, the district will have the opportunity to levy more than what's scheduled if the factors line up to allow you to do that, to kind of maybe enhance that drop, to position it for future needs, I'm not saying there are any identified or you're thinking that at this point, but just in case, it's always nice to give districts an opportunity to do what you believe with this referendum, layer in your debt, not necessarily have an increase in your debt service over what you're probably paying. Another thing to keep in mind in terms of the structure is the district will have some callable issues coming up in the next, you know, three to six years, where again, restructure, refinance, those types of things, if there's, you know, if there's a need that does become more apparent, you try, wanna try to build for, build the structure for, but again, the district always has the opportunity to levy more scheduled payments, pre-finance and future payments, again, if the fact variables all align to allow you to do that, so. So very good results, debt service tax rate is actually based on the assumptions we're using, is scheduled to decline, and a great result on the interest rate. Again, the Moody's report is attached the next several pages, few pages, that talks about the strengths, some of the challenges, you know, the, for Wisconsin schools, I was working against the revenue limits, as I always, I can swear, because you necessarily have to control to just generate the revenues they feel best to, to meet the needs, obviously debt is a little bit of a category referendum, you have, you have the taxing authority to make your debt payments. We always, we always more than that, undervalue that, but again, a very good report. With that, I'll conclude my conference and take any questions if there are any.
Mike, I wonder if I can just comment quickly, I went back and looked at what Baird put together for the referendum, so that would have been in December of 2019, I think we were, at that point, we're getting at 3.25%?
We, we were, and it's, it's a good, good point, it's well below that, and obviously, couple of things, one, you know, the economy was roaring along, this back then, stock market was doing well, you know, we were feeling, so, at the time, people felt well, this continues, rates are starting to creep higher, and obviously, a lot of things have happened since, since January 1, to cause rates to come down, and we're seeing rates, you know, more than we've really ever seen them, so, in terms of the, the cost to the taxpayers down dramatically, we were able to, district will have a little more flexibility with its tax rate for the debt service, and that, you know, it's just a few pennies, but given your tax base that still generates a few dollars, then given the uncertainty at the state level in terms of school funding over the next couple of years, to have a little flexibility is beneficial, but yes, the interest rate, we use it as 3.25, I think at the time when we were seeing 10-year borrowings in the 2.25, 2.5 range, so we were roughly about a percent above the market was, but, you know, if you think back, it's six months, September, they sort of moved the other direction, 1% versus down 1%, you know, then we'd be right about that estimate, and, so, but a great result for the district, and again, that's great for the community, because they have been so supportive to the school district over the last many years, so, the district's best force, support that they've been willing to give, and so.
Any questions for Mike?
I, I did, if he could just explain, and I know, Bill, you could probably explain this, but it looks like, you know, the first two years, which is the interest only, it coincides with the debt drop off to maintain that meal rate, is offset by the bid premium that we're receiving, I wonder if you could explain that and what a bid premium is?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't say we're gonna do that, and I can't do that, the bid premium, especially in low interest rate environments, bidders will bid more than the face value of bonds, this does not give you more dollars to spend on projects, the only thing you can do with that excess above the face value of the bonds, I should say, no, in this case, no, is use it to pay interest costs, related to that debt, so, they do, they bid the premium to get a higher coupon on the bonds, so, almost, so, even though interest rates are, are low, the coupon on, on some of these maturities is 2%, well, your interest rates only, your, your cost, your interest cost, your net interest cost is 1.27%, well, if the coupon says 2%, and your cost is only 1.27%, they're giving you the money to pay that difference, so your net cost is the 1.27, even though the coupon or the bonds will say 2%, and they do this, it's more of a secondary market concern when they're trading these bonds, because your, your bonds don't necessarily go to one institution or entity that's there for the duration, they're quite often bought sold, it's easier to sell a premium bond where it's above the face value in the secondary market versus a discount bond, just to get some, some tax treatment so that discount capital gains and things, so, that's the, that's the reason you receive premium, and in the bid specs, when we allow premium to be bid, because that's what, that's what the bidders want, the underdogs want, is that, that provides flexibility, because if you, if you don't allow a premium, you probably, would probably look at that being done on the issue, so, it doesn't give you more of a base bet, it just reduces your net interest cost to get to the 1.27, even though the coupon admitting the maturity is, let's say, 2%.
And I think when I, when I factored in that bid premium and compared that to the referendum figure, the overall cost for our taxpayers in terms of principal and interest and their credit is almost $800,000 less, so, over the duration.
Yeah, and when you look at the interest on, on this, it's a little over 900, I mean, that's a substantial, substantial savings.
Any other questions for Mike?
Did a good job reading those numbers. Yeah, thank you.
All right, I think, I think we're just gonna go through the resolution now, Mike, so it doesn't sound like there's any other questions.
Okay, well, great, yeah, if you do have any, if I could stay on or help you there, and if you could just send, send me a quick note, you know, the board does approve the resolution, just so we can let the waiting bidder know.
Yep, we'll do that.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mike.
All right, thanks, Bill, bye.
Bye, Mike. The, there was a draft resolution, which I think in the main agenda, then underneath you'll see the final resolution, which then has the little bit, so that's the only difference between those two.
I can read it out loud.
Well, they used to read minutes out loud, just minutes from the meeting.
And these are attached to the minutes sometimes.
Right, yes.
I'm not hearing any questions, but you need to approve the resolution. So we need a motion to do that.
I move to approve the resolution awarding the sale of $6,920,000 general obligation promissory notes as presented.
So move in second and to approve the resolution awarding the sale of $6,920,000 general obligation promissory notes as presented. Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yeah.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yeah.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
The bill will let him know. Our recommendations of district manager. Okay, first up, personnel, we have a number of new appointments to the school district here, it's hiring season. Allison Wagnercheck has been hired as a school secretary at Jackson, she'll be replacing Renee Mays for the 2021, 2020, 2021 school year, and we have Daniel Birch, who's been hired as a social studies teacher, he'll be replacing Justin Dietrich for the 2020, 2021 school year, Courtney Gora has been hired as a middle school English Language Arts teacher, and she'll be replacing Katie Spurley, who shifted to a different position within the district internal, within the middle school. Ashley Mio has returned to the school district, she, when I got hired, I think she had left at that point to another position, but she'll be, so she's been here before, she'll be replacing Linda Fragerberg, who shifted to one of the other open positions during the internal transfer, and then, like to introduce you to Sinta Holmes, who's here with us this evening, she's prepared a speech for you. Sinta was selected as the community resilience and social emotional outreach coordinator position, which will be a new position for us this year, in all earnest, do you have anything you'd like to say, Sinta, I don't, you don't need to go to speak.
I just thank you very much for this opportunity, I'm honored for this position.
Right, and Sinta is joining us, currently she works at the UW Whitewater admissions office, correct? We have a transfer list, Fox Voight will be moving from the Dean of Students position at Westside to replace Pat Butters in the second grade teacher position, she'll want to return to the classroom, and then here you see the transfer of Linda Fragerberg going over to science, she'll be replacing Mark Hodgins, she's excited to go back to science, she was heavy in science at the elementary level before moving up to the middle school. Neil Janda will be transferring from high school to go and fill our special education position at SOHO, she'll be replacing James Vellou, I know she's really excited about that opportunity, and Rachel Rooker has resigned, she will not be returning next year, she's moving up north to be with her significant other, up north, I told her she should just talk and then move down here, apparently, she couldn't do that. And then Katie Eves is, that won't return this coming year, she's choosing to stay at home with her little one, and then we have Sidney Rappi, who has been, she's a new hire to us at the high school physical education position, and she'll be replacing Justin Dietrich as the volleyball coach, and then Jordan Kaiser was selected to serve as the boys soccer head coach, she'll be replacing his father, Dizzy Kaiser. Any questions on any of those?
I move to approve the personal recommendation sheet for June 22nd, 2020, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check and district mandated to our screen as presented.
Is there a second? So move in second and to approve the personal recommendation sheet for June 22nd, 2020, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check, district mandated, to our screen as presented. Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yeah.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Motion carried. School gifts? Congratulations. Okay, we have a number of school gifts this evening, the United Way of Walworth County has donated $1,000 to support the adult meals, just to say, now, last I looked, we were still averaging around 200 meals a day, is that still correct, Bill?
Correct.
About 200 adult meals.
That's adult meals.
Just adult meals, we're still over 500 a day student meals. Joe Bono State Farm is donating 50 QuickTrip milk vouchers to families in need, valued at 99.50, and Canbeck Petroleum Corp. is donating $500 to Matt and Sykes Department of Wheels.
Where's Canbeck Petroleum from?
How are we with the budgeting for the adult meals for the rest of the summer?
Yeah.
We're gonna need more donations, we have, next week you'll have a Walmart grant, you know, a couple of grants that I applied for, we did get one of them, the $25,000, and still waiting to hear back from another one, but we're, yeah, only to still do more fundraising for it, we were, we paid the portion, the Education Foundation cut the district a check for the portion from the school year through the end of the school year, and that total was almost close to $37,000, so I think that'll probably be on the next gift list, too. So, and, and again, that's because the Education Foundation is collecting donations for it, yeah, so, that was about $37,000, and there's probably four or five thousand still in there allocated for this prior to the other donations coming, so, yeah, we'll still need a fundraise for some level of need that's there. Thank you for listening to Puffer Gifts. And a second.
I'll second.
To move in second and to approve the generous gifts of the United Way of Walworth County, Joe Bono, State Farm Insurance, and Canbeck Petroleum Corporation, as presented. Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yeah.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Budget discussion.
This is the, the second reading of the preliminary budget for 2020, 21, there are no changes in the document from the last board meeting, I think the only potential one was with our bond sale, that would impact our debt payments, and it really doesn't, so, so the numbers are the same as what was at the last board meeting, the, the only, I guess, additional information we will be seeing is by state statute, the Department of Public Instruction is required to give us a state aid estimate on July 1st for the upcoming school year, I don't anticipate that number to be anywhere near accurate, and I think they're all aware of it because they, they don't have the information to know what that really is gonna look like, other than budget reports and current state law. It always is an estimate, but I wouldn't propose that we change our estimate based on that estimate, other than that, in terms of additional information, at the state level, we really don't have any more updates, if there's gonna be a budget repair bill or not a budget repair bill, I think because of the late and the income tax payments to the July 15th, there's likely to be another projection in terms of what impact it's gonna have on the state, and of course, all of this really comes down to a duration question of our situation, so, I think what we have in terms of the proposed budget is, is I think what we have in terms of the proposed budget is our best estimate. It's relatively conservative though, because we're assuming basically, you know, in terms of revenue cap, such that, that we wouldn't see an increase at all. So that's kind of built in. And we've had a couple of different ways in which we could fund that, and that became our reality. And then we'll, we'll know more as we get closer to September, even if the state doesn't make any decisions before that. Because we'll have to release our enrollment numbers. We'll have to finalize our budget in October, so. Unless there's any questions for the board. I don't really have anything else to share.
Questions for Mr. Trun?
I would just add, I listened to an interview with Amy Lauterbach this morning. She's on the finance committee. They asked her about the budget repair bill. And she said that there was definitely, you know, no definitive timeline, likely nothing before the elections in November. And she said that it's the governor who has to introduce the bill. I wonder whether that's right.
I think if I were to say anything, you'd think, you know, I would clarify my statement last time when we said, okay, there's the most uncertainty we've ever had. But the one good thing about this particular district, and I think Jason touched on it once before, is because of the decisions that we made years ago, or previous boards made years ago, this district is in a unique position of being able to weather the storm. So we put away money. We kept ourselves pretty conservative. And for a rainy day, and, and boys are raining. So we're gonna, we're gonna go through, and, you know, all those numbers, there's all negative numbers there. But the reality is, we're, we're sitting in a position where hopefully, for one year, while we have complete uncertainty, we can buy ourselves some stability.
Yeah.
And stability is important, so we're not making knee jerk decisions. I'm sure there's people out there that are saying to us, or that would say, hey, you need to make cuts right now to for your budgets, to anticipate these, these cuts that are coming in. But we have, we honestly have no idea what the cuts are going to be. We just know that we're staying in a position where we don't really have all the information. So making knee jerk decisions is not in the best interest of, of the district, nor the best interest of our students or our staff. So I think we put ourselves in a certain position. Cruel. So a lot of people, Mr. Truen, Mr. Tedlock, and everyone that came before. That's all I would say.
I remember conversations years before when we were looking at different things and we said, we cannot guarantee what's going to happen in 20 years. And we were a decision that we didn't make because we didn't want to put future boards in situations. So we're, we're sitting in a good position. And obviously, referendums, but we've worked well on that. Look at the one we've got coming up with that one point. 3%. I mean, that's phenomenal. So.
We made tough decisions. We've made, we've made very tough decisions over the years.
But we also didn't make decisions that were just
Arbitrary.
Arbitrary and kind of flying the sky. We tried to make a very, very grounded decision.
You have to make tough decisions again. That's what we'll do, but I don't want those knee jerk decisions.
Right.
Based on lack of information. I think that's what we're doing is correct.
It certainly helps in the hiring process, the quality of candidates that we get, the ability when they look at you nervously. I mean, are you going to, is this job going to be here? And to be able to show them that the district, at least in our known history, has never done a layoff for financial reasons, which probably is accurate because, I mean, even historically, because prior to the QEO, the districts could raise the levy to whatever need, whatever level they needed. So there wouldn't have ever been a, I mean, prior to, when was QEO, '93? So from '93 on, we may be one of only a handful of districts in the state that has managed our budget the way that we have to do a layoff for financial reasons. And that creates a lot of sense of security with staff coming on board. And I know whatever budgetary constraint we face, we'll be able to manage a solution that won't require us to eliminate positions that are needed and that require staff. So that, that helps all these new applicants. It's, you can see the nervousness
Sure, sure. Right.
In their face.
Because it used to be the first one in, first one out, even when there was a situation.
Right.
And now I think more districts are looking at who provides the most quality if they're in that situation. And that's well rounded. And when we hire people, we do look at everything that they have to offer, not just the one position that they're holding. So, because we do have flexible employee background.
Looking for a motion to approve, approve our budget.
I move to approve the 2021 district preliminary budget as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved and seconded to approve the 2020, 2021 district preliminary budget as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Motion carried. Announcements.
All right. So a couple of announcements real quick. Summer school is underway, and we will have some face-to-face swim lessons. We're finalizing their plans where they'll be on site and some of the strength and conditioning will be on site as well after July 1. Our COVID plan, which I sent another update to parents, and I get it, people want to know exactly what are the details and what you're going to do, and I just have to reinforce, I'll answer people. Everything is speculation right now. The county's asked for time towards the end of the July to clarify some of the questions that we had in relation to that. But I gave the parents a little bit of details. But again, having patience and being able to get closer to that date will give us a better picture of where we're at, how things are going, and what precautions we need to use.
Right.
Really, you know, again, it goes back to not making knee jerk decisions, right? Really thinking things through as well as we can. We're not always perfect, but when we think of things through, make decisions as early as possible, I think we're going to be better.
And, and things in the county right now, I mean, it's it's within our community, it's looking relatively good to not have cumbersome restrictions. Now, if there's huge outbreaks or things go south, that may change. But that's why the end of July is over a month away. Even having that released beginning of August, that's still a month before spring starts. So we did share another communication. I know you guys are getting hit with those. Feel free to keep referring to me, but that's the information that I have that we're ready to release. And we'll wait, you know, we gave the county health department some questions regarding if somebody is symptomatic, how long do they have to stay out, what's required for them to come back? And they wanted more time to give us some good answers on that. Not that they could give us answers right now, but we might not like the answers that they give us right now.
Yeah.
With more information, I think they can give us a better, more accurate answer at that point in exchange. We did receive another grant, the Wisconsin Virtual Child School Grant, which was highly competitive. We received $750,000 for that. That goes to the Career and College Academy at Gateway, formerly known as the Alternative High School, and for that program expansion and flexibility. So that $750,000 is over a five-year period. So about $250,000 a year. And then the annual meeting, we'd like to move the location from the middle school to the high school auditorium so people can space as much as they want. We can put the school board spaced out well up on the stage and shine spotlights on you. And we'll also make it virtual, so we can still have the virtual connection. And Paul will put you on the big screen so everybody can see it.
Make sure it's a big, big screen.
So that's all I have.
Okay, it's July 29?
Yeah, that's on Wednesday.
So I just wanted to make sure.
Fourth Monday, whatever.
Okay, that's the 20th.
I just wanted to make sure. I know, I was like, does that replace our 27th?
It's on, it's on my announcement, written the 29th.
Yeah.
And I think you said the 29th, probably reading that, but I'm not sure.
Yeah.
July 27th is the last Monday.
Yeah, it's the last Monday. I don't know where you're reading the 27th.
The typo.
It's, it's on our board announce, our board notes.
Right. So I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Yeah, no, it's not the 29th.
Okay.
I'm just not seeing it on the board notes.
Do you want me to just continue the, the board meeting there?
I think we might as well, if it's set up, just continue the meeting there. Does that work?
That's fine. I just wanted to.
I know, sometimes we come back.
But no, that's fine.
Oh, you just continue meeting there. Yeah, that makes sense.
As long as you have it set up, yeah.
All right. That's all I have then.
Do a adjourn.
Second.
Do a second adjourn. Roll call vote.
Uh, one second. It's too quick. Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.